It's just so funny, just act like this is...
Of course, right.
But it's...
Right.
Like, she's like, I don't really want to talk about it. And I'm like, I don't know, you know, the listeners. She's like, I know, it's the...
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
I appreciate it.
So it's eight in the morning, and I'm just making sure that she knows where she is. And then I'll need all the receipts back by like Monday.
Okay.
I'm gonna try to come up. I have an interview at NBD at like... So it's maybe around like, um...
It's Sandra.
I'll respect you on my way. I don't know how long it's gonna go with it. I have to check on this. My date is...
Right.
If you desire to address the City Council tonight, please complete a request to speak form at the entrance and present it to the city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. Thank you all for being here this evening. This time, I will call to order and convene the City Council meeting for the city of Grand Terrace. It's a regular meeting of September 12th, 2017. This evening, our invocation will be given by Councilmember Bill Hussey, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Doug Wilson. If you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, I thank you for bringing us here together tonight and to do your will, Lord. Lord, I'd ask that you give us guidance that we need to make the decisions for the betterment of the residents here in Grand Terrace, God. I ask, Lord, that you protect our loved ones, protect our first responders, and bless this nation, Lord, especially after our anniversary for 9/11, God. I ask that you continue to let Grand Terrace thrive and God bless America. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey, and thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Madam City Clerk, we have roll call, please.
Councilmember Reynars.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Protem Robles.
Present.
Mayor McNaboe.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. So our first order of business tonight is a special presentation, and this is from the Foundation of Grand Terrace Dog Park Committee. Their representative would come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. As you know, my name is Thomas Rice. I'm the president of the Foundation of Grand Terrace, and we've come to you tonight with excellent news. First of all, a big thank you to all of you on the dog park groundbreaking. Two weeks ago, we really appreciate all the effort the City Council has gone to to making that a reality. And thank you also for establishing your Dog Park Endowment Fund. As you know, the foundation, and particularly our committee, Dog Park Committee, which is chaired by Mike Ald, who joins me this evening, has been for the last, how many years?
Recently, oh, six or so.
Six or so years has been raising money diligently for the effort of bringing a dog park to Grand Terrace. We naively thought it would be a lot cheaper than it would, was ended up going to be, so again, thanks for the effort you're pulling in with the Quimby Funds and your city managers' foresight and efforts in that regard. To that effect, this evening, we've got a donation for your endowment. It's not a real donation at this time, it's more of a comedy check, but we do promise a real one is forthcoming, so we'd like to make a presentation of $3,000 from the Foundation of Grand Terrace's Dog Park Fund to the city's endowment fund.
Hi. As Tom indicated, my name is Mike Ald, and I am also a member of the foundation. And I want to thank all the citizens of Grand Terrace, particularly the people who, before I even came around, started this ball rolling many years ago to try to bring a dog park to Grand Terrace. I want to thank the foundation members, and Tom, and the City Council, and the city staff, everybody who has worked so hard for this. I also want to indicate that the endowment, however it wound up being worded, but the endowment is very important part of this whole thing because through the endowment, we're able to maintain basic maintenance and repair at our dog park without having to tap into the wallets of the citizens of Grand Terrace, which I know makes many of the people here happy. So this is a fund that is being set aside to maintain and repair the dog park, and we are currently selling through the city, no, selling, offering benches for $500, $1,000, or $1,500, which goes directly into that endowment for the dog park. And I put my money where my mouth is because I was one of the first to buy a bench, and I'm looking forward to that, and I encourage anybody else to do that. And we also hope in the future to be able to offer other types of mementos, memories, whatever, which can bring money into the endowment fund, such as just small plaques on a wall, or a dog bone, or, you know, fire hydrant. So, anyway, once again, thank you, and here we are. The foundation is presenting this check to the city, and the citizens, and the dog park.
And that check is just begging for a photo op, so let's have one.
Is it?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you again. Another round of applause. So Mr. Duffy has an announcement, but before he does that, I want to mention the technical difficulties we are having tonight. So I apologize to those of you who are viewing at home. My understanding is we have one operable camera, but the audio is working, is that true? Okay. So my apologies, we had people working on it tonight, and they will continue until they get it working, and so hopefully, we will be back up and running for the next scheduled meeting. And so, Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, the city manager. Last year, or this year, the city received community development block grant funding, and the City Council allotted money for a senior center coordinator, and that person's been hired. Her name is Megan McBidden, and she, I'll introduce her to the council and to the city.
Hello. Thank you so much. I'm so excited to be here, and I've been at the senior center for about a week now, and I'm having a lot of fun getting to know the seniors, and I'm excited to see where we can take it and to get the programs and participation up there.
All right. Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you so much. And also, we're having a movie night on September 28th, and we are inviting anyone who would like to come, and we're gonna have food and have a movie out on the lawn.
What, what movie?
Oh, we're playing Pillow Talk with Doris Day.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. We'll move on to our consent calendar. The consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, and they will be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion. Any staff member, citizen, or I may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests at this time? All right. I know we have one item that we need to read by title before we vote. We have two. All right. Madam City Clerk, please do that.
An ordinance of the City Council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, amending Section 4.56.010 permit fee of Chapter 4.56, Street and Parkway Tree Permits of Title IV Comprehensive Fee Schedules, Fines, and Taxes, and amending Section 12.28.140 Maintenance and Pruning, and Section 12.32.060 Trees and Plants to Title 12 Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code relating to street trees. And an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, determining that Municipal Code Amendment 17-02 is categorically exempt under Section 15061B, subsection B, subsection 3 of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and approving Municipal Code Amendment 17-02 to add Chapter 15.26, Electric Vehicle Charging Station Streamline Permitting Process, to Title 15 of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code.
Mr. City Attorney, if I want to vote no on one of these items, can I state what it is, or do I need to pull it out first?
You can state what it is.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
I'd like to make a motion on the consent calendar.
For approval?
For approval.
Okay.
Sorry.
Councilmember Hussey makes a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Reynars seconds it. We'll go ahead and vote. I'm going to vote no on item four.
I too will vote no on item four.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously on items number one, two, and five with Councilmembers Reynars, Hussey, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor McNaboe voting yes. On item number four, motion passes with Councilmembers Reynars, Hussey, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Councilmember Wilson voting no, Mayor McNaboe voting no.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. I think, Madam City Clerk, that you missed item three.
The check register?
Excuse me?
Check register?
Yes. She said one, two, and five, and it was one, two, three, and five, I think.
I apologize. Motion passes on item number three with Councilmembers Reynars, Hussey, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Thank you. Sorry to make the consent calendar so complicated. All right. So we'll move on to public comment, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on our agenda tonight. And so, based on the restrictions of California law, the council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. We also might request a brief response of staff to questions raised during public comment, or may request a matter be agendized in a future meeting. So we have requests to speak? Thank you. Our speaker is Jeffrey McConnell.
For the record, Jeffrey McConnell, 21758 Walnut Avenue. I'm here to, I've waited patiently for a while since May 22nd. This is regarding to the rezoning of the 40 acres down along the river at the end of Terrace Avenue. The city hired a consultant, I think it was back in March, after deliberating for approximately a month. And I was in the impression, because he was knowledgeable in this area, he knew a shortcut, and it would speed up the situation. So we had a meeting with the property owners and staff on May 22nd, and I basically haven't heard anything since then, and we're almost, we're coming up on five months right now. So I decided that I would bring it up now as to why it's taken so long, why did we hire a consultant, just a lot of questions, I guess I have, regarding that issue. I did, after the meeting, prepare a zoning detail which the staff was trying to acquire during the meeting, but was not accomplished, so I came back after working with the fellow ranchers down there, and I handed it to staff. It was about three, four days, I don't remember the exact time amount, but since then, I have not heard any response to even that. So I just want to bring that up. And a separate issue, my situation hasn't been resolved yet. That nine-page email I sent to the council, and I have less than two weeks to go to the next level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Mr. Duffy, did you have a comment that you wanted to make on that item?
Yes, Mayor, just very briefly. I did meet today with Mr. McConnell and tried to address some of his issues. I also outlined to him some of the processes, and I told him that we should be completed with the rezoning process, or the mechanism to rezone the 40 acres by December. And so I'm more than willing to meet with Mr. McConnell again if you'd like, but I thought I laid out that process. We talked about multiple items, and I heard his concerns, and we're gonna move forward with it, so.
All right. Thank you. Are there any more requests to speak during this time? All right. Seeing no takers, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for their communications. We'll start with Councilmember Brian Reynars.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight to take a look at their government in action. Since the last meeting, I attended a few public meetings. The first one was the community meeting we had at Azure Hills regarding our public safety and our sheriff staffing, and I think that meeting should be a source of public pride because that room was packed. I don't know if I've ever seen so many people in one room, so we know where the community's concern is, and we know what issue it is that they care about. And next, I went to the dog park groundbreaking, which was also a source of community pride. I know a lot of dedicated volunteers have worked on that for a long time, and it is really good to see that come to fruition finally. And then lastly, I would like to say that my thoughts and prayers are with the people of Houston, Texas, Miami, and Tampa Bay, Florida, for the flooding and the rains and the hurricanes that are going on there. I think about them every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Reynars. Councilmember Bill Hussey?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. A couple things. I went to a leadership summit for Colton Joint Unified School District kids, and it was over at San Bernardino Valley College. They actually wanted to hear me speak. I don't know why, but they did, so. I had a little outline, you know, 10 points on what I used to become, well, I feel I used to become a leader. So it was really neat, really interesting, the kids coming out on a Saturday night, I mean, Saturday morning, and it was hot. It was really hot. But they sat there in the class, and I asked them questions, and they liked a little gift, Mr. Duffy, that you gave me to give to them, and they liked the brochures and explained to them. And we had a couple of the students that were interested in internship, and if we could have one, so I never got Mr. Duffy on that. And I also attended the dog park celebration, and it was hot out that day, too, and we had hot dogs. I didn't get a hot dog, but I did get an icy thing there, so thank you for the staff for putting that together, you know, and the foundation, too, for getting there. And it makes you proud to be a city councilman, that we were able to get that going, and you know, Mr. Duffy and his staff are able to get the funds to get that going and stuff. And a couple other things. My son, he just graduated from the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Academy, and our surprise, thank God, he takes after my wife. He came out number one in the class, so we're really proud of him, so we're getting a good guy there. He's gonna be working in a West Valley Detention Center, so we're proud of the young man, and I just wish him all the best. And then one thing, and I want to thank Bob and city manager, and it means we had an escaped turtle that was a walking boulder, and my wife called me and said, "There's a turtle out here." I go, "Well, pick it up." Well, you can't pick it up. It was like a 125-pound turtle, and we picked him up, me and Bob did, and that thing fought pretty good, and Mr. Duffy put him in the yard, and I guess he escaped again, so. And then I found his name was Turbo, so. Anyway, I just want to thank all the staff, and even the sheriff came in there and goes, "Well, where's the turtle at?" And he was surprised, too, so. It was a little, quite an incident that night, so it was something different, but I want to thank everybody for coming out here, and my thoughts and prayers are, too, with Houston and Florida, and wish those residents and civilians all the best, and be with the first responders as they're putting their life on the line to save innocent lives out there, so. And the military, they've been called to, so thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Doug Wilson?
Just two things, Mayor. Number one, I am happy to see that we've got such great traction in relation to our emergency planning, and that is one of the items that's on our agenda tonight. Obviously, all the television coverage of the emergency management brings home some of the policies that FEMA has instituted over the last, say, 10 to 15 years, and now gotten to an enforcement situation. Now, you have to build houses up on stilts if you're gonna be in a flood zone. It's pretty obvious what happens now if you're in a low-lying area. So that item, I'm glad to see it is moving forward. Also, around the time that the dog park was, we had the groundbreaking, we were having a lot of trouble with our little dog, and unfortunately, she didn't make it, so she passed away on Labor Day. But we will observe the construction of the park in her memory and look forward to completion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Mayor Protem Sylvia Robles, returning from vacation.
Yeah. I was fortunate to escape the heat for a while in, to Alaska. So as I do every anniversary of 9/11, I remember Cora Hidalgo-Holland of San Bernardino who passed away on the first flight. She was a Boston suburb resident and was coming home to take care of affairs for her elderly mother, and she was putting two of her children in college, so she had to delay that trip. So that delay put her, unfortunately, in the 9/11 casualties, and I bless your memory, Cora. I also want to report on AMATRANS. I missed the last meeting, we're having an issue with, they were sending my emails to my private email, and the attorneys told them, you know, you have to CC, so I asked everything, come to my city email, and I got the Jennifer either, because I would send my alternate, and that wasn't able, but the previous meetings, AMATRANS is still the lead agency for the Federal Transit Act dollars, so they had to do some cleanup on the Redlands Rail Project with the government on that. They also are in the process of hiring a rail coordinator. Their report that just came to me on the digital pass for AMATRANS passes is just a phenomenal success, and also, they have airport, Ontario Airport Service now through AMATRANS, and they're reporting that immediately took off. I also attended the dog park opening. It was tremendously hot. It really, really was, and I'm told by staff, we got a report that every, all the memorials are sold out. Oh, all the, okay. So, oh, and also, I want to thank city staff. They did an excellent job on getting that ready. Also, attended the sheriff's services workshop that the citizens are putting together, and I just wanted to see if staff or the attorney wanted to make any comment on latest legislation, on what the threshold is for ballot measures, if it's citizen-initiated.
There we go. What was the question again?
There was a recent court decision that, on ballot, yeah.
Yes. It indicated that if the, they got the required number of signatures to require the city to put it on for a special election, that it should be put on a special election, even if it doesn't follow the constitutional provisions that... election, even if it doesn't follow the constitutional provisions that taxes need to be at a general election of the city.
Okay, so there wasn't anything as far as thresholds, simple majority or two-thirds?
No.
Okay. Okay, and then lastly, and I don't have their addresses, but I want to recognize longtime Grand Terrace resident Rudy Gutierrez has passed away, and I want to extend my condolences to his family. And also, Richard Bonse, who my husband and I grew up with, and his adult children are Grand Terrace residents, I want to extend my condolences as we are transitioning into a heavenly world, and I want to thank you for letting me make my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I also attended the sheriff's community meeting, and I was happy to say that I was, I was overwhelmed by how many people showed up, and I think that Lieutenant Wolf and Captain Gomez did an excellent job in their presentations. Thank you very much for that and for pulling that together, and thank you for the residents who went out and invited people, because I know that that's really what it took. And I think Sheriff's Service Specialist Sylvia Beasley was here personally inviting people, handing out flyers, and, and that really showed in the attendance. I think it was overflowing that the number, the number of chairs that were set up were not enough. They had to bring in more. That's always a great problem. And the Dog Park Groundbreaking, I thought, went exceptionally well despite the heat. There was a wonderful turnout. The staff did a great job of putting that together. There was a beautiful sunset that night as well, so it was, it shows that that area is going to be very nice. On September 6th, I, I attended the San Bernardino County Transit Authority Board of Directors meeting, and there were a number of items that I reported on from General Policy and Metro Valley Study Session, and so all of those items did, did pass at the board meeting. There were a few additional that I didn't report on. One of them was a closed session we had with legal counsel on existing and anticipated litigation. Under discussion for administrative matters, we appointed a Valley Transportation Services member, John Roberts, to extend his term out to December 31st, 2017. There's a change in, in the representation for that particular service that they are providing, and Ometrans will be the selected service provider, so just to finish out the transition, there was the extension of Mr. Roberts' appointment. We also discussed as a council of government, the inland, we had a nice presentation from the Inland Economic Growth Opportunity Project, Project Coordinator Lou Monville. He was discussing a, an opportunity that they have with the Brookings Institute to do a report on the inland empire and the needs assessment for growing the economy. He promises to come back and let us know as they get closer to a, a report that they can share, but he wanted to announce the project and talk about the possibilities for the region. Under Project Delivery, we had hearings to consider resolutions of necessity for parcels for the US 395 Phase 1 widening, cities of Adelanto and Victorville. And under Transit, we had a Southern California Regional Rail Authority Budget Amendment allocation for fiscal year 2017, 2018. This is the same, the same type of budget allocation that they asked for last year, and what this does is it adds an extra metro-length train out to the stadium area for the Rams football games. They found that last year, when they added these, this extra train service in their schedule, that it was very well taken advantage of, so they're doing it again this year. And so the budget amount that they're asking for is, is only for the running of the train. They, they do charge for the tickets, but people like that service, and so they're going to give them that service again this year. In addition to the recognitions that Mayor Protem did, we lost a couple of other longtime residents, Terrence Terry McGuire Jr. He is the wife of Sally McGuire, who's very active in our community. They've both lived here since before the city was founded. And Gary Robinson, who is a co-owner of Stonewood Construction, he and his wife Corinne have been developers of homes in this area for quite a number of years. So there are celebrations of life just past us, and I would like to, to honor them. In closing, we can add to those, the two. So we'll honor four people tonight in the closing of our, or in the adjournment of our meeting. And that will do it for my report. We said we will move on to the rest of our agenda. Under public hearings, we have none, but we do have one item of unfinished business, and that's an ordinance to repeal Chapter 9.32 of Title IX relating to sex offenders and finding that the ordinance is exempt from SEQA review. Mr. City Attorney, is that something that we have to do with all of our ordinances now? Determine whether they, they are exempt or they fall under SEQA?
Certain ordinances require it, and I've been a little conservative in, in putting it in more. The idea is if you're having a discretionary decision, which this would be, a lot of them are statutorily exempt because they couldn't have an impact on the environment. So just to be on the safe side, because there's been litigation recently about that issue, I, I put them in a few more. There's some that I won't, but I've been recommending it in a few more.
And I've been noticing the, the appearance of that statement, so. All right, thank you very much. So this is a second reading on this item, and so we don't have a staff report, but we do have an opportunity if the public would like to speak on this item. All right. Seeing no takers, I will bring it back to council for discussion and consideration of a motion.
Mayor, if you would like, I have some updates that I could provide.
Certainly.
I have a PowerPoint for that, too.
Well, let's see your PowerPoint, Mr. City Attorney.
This is my first time with this deal, so hopefully I'm able to work it. At the last meeting, Keith Collins from my office came in and did a comparison for the city council with regard to Jessica's Law and the local law, which is the subject of the ordinance, which is Chapter 9.32. Now, the first slide here is showing you what you had already seen at the last meeting. At the last meeting, the ordinance was here for introduction, and during the presentation, there were some questions that were asked, and one of the questions was, are there other laws that pertain to these type issues besides Jessica's Law? And the answer was yes, that Mr. Collins gave, and he gave an example. So there seemed to be an interest in the council to see what else there was. This comparison chart includes the new material, and if I can move it forward. First, it's talking about Jessica's Laws on the left-hand side, talking about a couple of aspects of it. But on the next slide, you'll see at the top where it says residency, Jessica's Laws on the left-hand side, on the right-hand side is your current law. And as you can see, it's pretty much the same, except for in situations of school, the residency needs to be 2,640 feet as opposed to 2,000, but the rest of it's consistent with Jessica's Law. Now we get down to the, the new laws that we've put in here. First off, I'd like to start with the local law, which is the first bullet point on the right-hand side, which talks about that, it says, "Sex offenders who are not on parole cannot be within 300 feet of schools unless a registered sex offender is a parent or guardian of a child, or individual legally responsible for child attends at the school." Now, I'm going to go to the next slide, and if I can make this pointer work, and I can't, maybe Mr. Duffy can. I'm pushing the wrong button. That's what it is, the wrong button. Here we, whoops.
I saw, I saw.
My thumb is too big.
I saw the pointer kind of point off as you moved.
There we go. Right here, right here. "The sex offender cannot enter schools without lawful business and written permission of school officials." So that's the state law that is similar to the one that is in, in the Grand Terrace Municipal Code. Then we have the second part over here, where it's, "That cannot go within 300 feet of a park where children are present unless a registered sex offender is a parent or guardian of a child for the individual legally responsible for the child." That's the Grand Terrace law, and you'll see at the top there, the first bullet point is the state law, which, right there, prohibits any sex offender from loitering near a school or public place where children attend. So that covers your parks, your daycare centers, and your schools. They're not allowed to loiter in any of those, whether they have a child or not. So that's state law. And let's see, let's go back up. Ay, ay, ay. I'm getting the hang of it. It's a learning curve. The, here's some more laws that the state has. If, if, if a sex offender were to go to college, they have to register with the school police. The next one is, there we go. That's the campus police one. And the first bullet point is, what you probably have heard before, is Megan's Law. Every sex offender must register, obviously, as a sex offender, and they're, they're on, on the internet. I've taken a look at it. You can put in your city, and you can find out not only what sex offenders may live near you, but also who they are and even see a picture of them. So that's Megan's Law. That's another law that a lot of people are aware of. And let's go to the next slide. Okay, the, the first bullet point there has to do with people either being employed or being volunteers, working with children when they're not accompanied by somebody else. This law by the state indicates that they have to advise the employer or where they're volunteering that they're a registered sex offender, but if the child that they're working with is a minor that's under 16, they, they're prohibited from being involved at all. If, if the, the crime that they committed was that type. And let's see, I think there's more. Yeah, here we go. They can't enter an adult care facility if their offense had something to do with, with elderly or dependent adults. They can, and if they're going to go live in one of those type of facilities, they have to disclose to that facility that they're a registered sex offender. So anyway, I thought I would bring these additional laws, since you've shown an interest in finding out what other state laws are involved besides Jessica Law, and these are those laws. And the only other thing that I would mention is, tonight is for the adoption of, of the ordinance to repeal Chapter 9.32. However you voted on the introduction and whatever is not binding on you, you can make whatever decision you want tonight, and I'm open for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So when we're repealing this chapter, we're not repealing our ordinance on sex offenders? We are making them more in alignment with the state?
Well, we are repealing the Section 9.32, which is Grand Terrace's law concerning sex offenders, because it could very potentially be subject to challenge, constitutional challenge, if we tried to enforce it or just have it on our books. But what this shows, what I tried to demonstrate, is the state already has laws that are very similar to what Grand Terrace has, so if this is repealed, Grand Terrace is not vulnerable. It still has those protections under state law.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reinars?
So basically, a lot of the law was redundant from Grand Terrace law to the state law, and basically, the only difference I see is the 640 feet.
That would be correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or consideration of a motion?
This would also need the title read, of course.
I move adoption of an ordinance to repeal Chapter 9.32, Regulation on Special Sex Offenders of Title IX, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare relating to sex offenders, and a finding that the ordinance is exempt from SEQA review.
So there's a motion by Mayor Protem. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Reinars.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Reinars. Councilmember Reinars voting yes. Mayor Protem Robles voting yes. Mayor McNebo voting yes. Councilmember Hesse and Councilmember Wilson vote no.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to new business, and the first is an award of September 2017 Community Benefits May we have a staff report? Ms. Fortune?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council, Cynthia Fortune, the Assistant City Manager. The report before you today is the applications for grant awards in our Community Benefits Fund. The staff report supports the following city council goals. Goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements against approved budget appropriations. And goal number four, develop and implement successful partnerships through productive collaboration with community groups, youth programs, and senior organizations. For the past two years, city council has approved the use of $25,000 for the establishment of the Community Benefits Fund. And I apologize, that should say 2017-18. So for 2017-18, the approved allocations for the Community Benefits Fund was about $1,2,500 for youth programs, $5,000 for art and business service organizations, community waiver requests of $2,500, and the holiday tree lighting ceremony of $5,000. So what the finance department has done at the beginning of the year was actually transfer the $5,000 for the holiday tree lighting into its own separate fund, so that we can monitor closely any additional donations come in and the expenditures, and report that to council. In addition to that, since, since the start of this fiscal year, we've awarded two grant awards. $2,000 to the Friends of the Library, of the Grand Terrace Library, and another $2,000 to the Little League, which brings that first youth program amount to $8,500. So if you looked at the table on page, I'm sorry, I'm jumping. On page 68, when we provide this report, we start with our beginning balance of the month, and as of this month, it is $16,000. So in front of council for the review and approval is to approve the award of two grant applications, one for the Terrace View Elementary PTA for Red Ribbon Week, and another for the Grand Terrace High School Volleyball Boosters League. The Grand Terrace Elementary PTA has requested this twice before. This is their third request, again, for Red Ribbon Week. They offer a variety of activities to help others develop a clear understanding of the ill effects that drugs and bullying have on people, and provide them with positive ways to live drug and bully-free. The original request was for $1,630. The organization has informed us that one of the activities that they are requesting, they were able to find funding for. So for tonight, all they are requesting is to $1,430. So they found $200 in funding for their, for one of their activities, and that is the River Rock activity. And the funds for this, the $1,430, will be used for anti, for an anti-bullying assembly and to purchase activity booklets for the students. Now, our second grant application is from the Grand Terrace High School Volleyball Boosters Club. Their, their activity is for young community members that will have the, to provide them with an, an opportunity to attend a volleyball skills and activity camp, where they will receive valuable, valuable instruction on the game that will emphasize teamwork and physical activity. These funds will be used to pay for uniforms, sports supplies, and photographs for 30 to 60 participants. to sixty participants. And as, as all applicants are aware, uh, there are several, um, requirements that they have to comply with. They have to issue the city of grand terrace an invoice for the grant amount in order to be reimbursed, ensure that the city is mentioned or included as a sponsor in any material advertising the activity or event, complete a W nine form, uh, for reporting purposes, and submit receipts within thirty days of the, in, uh, of the event or activity. And included in the packet were the two applications submitted by both organizations. That concludes my report, and, uh, each organization has a representative in the audience. Should City Council have any questions for them?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Fortune. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Reiners?
So one request was one thousand four hundred and thirty, and the second request was two thousand?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone that'd like to speak during this time? No? All right. Seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I'll move the item, recommendation to approve the award of two thousand from the City Community Benefits Fund to the Terrace View Elementary PTA for Red Ribbon Week event and supplies, and to approve award for, is it two thousand still?
Yes.
From the City's Community Benefits Fund to the Grand Terrace High School Volleyball Boosters League for player uniforms and supplies.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Wilson. Please vote.
Mayor, um, motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Reiners, Hesse, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor McNebo voting yes.
All right. Thank you for being here tonight to, in case we had questions, and good luck with both of your, uh, your event and your, uh, your season. All right. We'll move to item eight, which is the adoption of resolution to apply for and accept if awarded funds from the California Department of Parks and Recre- Recreation Habitat Conservation Fund. May we have a staff report, please?
Just thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This report this evening authorizing staff to apply for a grant from the Habitat Conservation Fund to build a trailhead and connect to Blue Mountain promotes goal number four of the City's twenty thirty Vision Plan. And Madam Mayor, uh, for purposes of the audience, I am Sandra Molina, the Planning and Development Services Director. So the city, along with the Friends of Blue Mountain, have been working towards developing a trailhead to provide visitor amenities to access Blue Mountain, which is currently open twice a year. In October of two thousand sixteen, as the council will recall, the city submitted an application for this exact same grant for the construction of a trailhead. The application was well, well received by the, um, State Grants Office, and a site visit was conducted. And, uh, at that site visit, we did take the, uh, State Grants Office personnel up Blue Mountain. We showed them the trailhead location. We showed them approximately where it would connect to the existing fire road of Blue Mountain, and, uh, the application was well received. Uh, there was a competitive grant, though, though, because other, uh, grant opportunities that are typically available weren't available last fiscal year, and so this one was very competitive. Um, and unfortunately, we weren't, uh, successful, but we were encouraged to apply again, and the staff was very supportive of the application. So that's, that's the purpose of this evening's meeting. Uh, we are, uh, asking the council to authorize us to, uh, to submit the grant application. And just really, really quickly here, council saw these last year, but, uh, this is the city's, uh, property right here off of Observation and Van Buren. And so the application is to construct a trailhead at this location and to, uh, this is, this is the location here, and to build a trail that will connect, uh, to the existing, ultimately to the existing road that's at this location here. This is another view of it. Um, in order to, uh, do this, uh, part of the grant application is demonstrating that we have access to or authorization to access the adjacent private property, and, uh, Mr. Dennis Kidd, who is the owner, has, um, agreed to give the city a grant, excuse me, an easement to access the property if we are successful with the grant application. And so what I would, um... Oh, I also wanted to add that this particular grant is a matching dollar-for-dollar grant, and the city would anticipate using park funds, um, if we are successful. And with that, I would request that the council authorize staff to adopt the resolution, authorize staff to submit the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Molina. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Reiners?
The city attorney has recommended that I recuse myself from this item due to the proximity to my home.
All right. Any other questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing then I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I'd like to make a motion on the resolution of the City Council authorizing staff to apply for a grant from the Habitat Conservation Fund to build a trailhead in, uh, Anemone's, uh, city, oh, sorry, land at the corner of Observation and Van Buren.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hesse.
Second.
And second by Councilmember Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Hesse and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor McNebo voting yes, Councilmember Reiners abstains.
All right, thank you. And we are going to win this time, right? We're, we're all but assured of it, I understand, right? All right. Thank you for your efforts last time, and I'm glad we have an opportunity to reapply. So we'll move on to item nine. Welcome back, Councilmember Reiners. Item nine is the approved purchase of electronic content management system. May we have a staff report? Ms. City Clerk Debra Thomas?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem Robles, council members. Debra Thomas, City Clerk's office. Tonight before you, we're presenting a staff report for the approval of the purchase of an electronic content management system. This staff report supports the City Council core value of open and inclusive government and goal number five, to engage in proactive communication by utilizing technology to disseminate information and engage the community. On June twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, City Council approved a fixed asset request for a document management and electronic filing system for improved transparency and efficient turnaround on public records requests. On July fifth, the city sent out its request for proposal outlining its desire to acquire an electronic document management system and included its scope of services requirements to five separate firms. The city's intent, as stated in the RFP, was to procure and implement a document management system which provides electronic capture, management, collaboration, storage, preservation, and delivery of records electronically stored information to users in the city's organization and to the community via web access. The city received three responses to its RFP. After the initial review of the responses, we did request that each vendor provide a second response to the RFP where it was more comparable to the city's scope of services and requirements versus the initial, uh, responses received. We received three responses, one from CPS, Complete Paperless Solutions with their Laser FISH product, ECS Imaging in, with their Laser FISH product, and Questus Solutions, CMX Contact Management Product. Complete Paperless Solution appeared to be the lowest bidder. Laser FISH is a popular vehicle for electronic document management solutions and is the preferred choice for a large number of agencies and businesses in the area. It is compatible with the city's existing enterprise technology, technology solutions, and its utilization will improve the retention and security of important documents and records. The recommendation included several basic models, which included ten user licenses, which averages to two licenses per department. It can be extended to all staff if needed, but that could be assessed at a later time. Based on the proposals received, staff is recommending that City Council approve the purchase and installation of the Laser FISH Avante Electronic Content Management System from Complete Paperless Solutions in the amount of twenty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. That ends my report, and I'm here to answer any questions, as well as the CEO of Complete Paperless Solution, Tom Ziancina. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Are there any questions of, of staff at this time?
All right. I, I have one question with respect to the, the idea of servers. In the packet on page one oh five, it mentions the hardware costs and hardware configuration, and that CPS does not provide or sell servers or computers. Do we need an additional server?
At this time, it is covered. We do not believe we need one. We can assess it later on when we address historical records of, of large quantity, but from here going forward, we're covered.
Okay. And also, when it talked about the licenses for users, it was indicating that a computer could be a user, and that's, the license would go to a particular computer. Does that mean that anybody that sits down at that computer can use this program or this system?
That, we are trying not, we, we... You know, I'm gonna refer to Mr. Ziancina if that would be okay on that. I know we discussed it, but I think there was an issue on whether or not that was something we should do. We should have everybody individually licensed and assigned so that... Uh, but if we want to use it as a kiosk, then of course we would want somebody to access maybe web to just review records in the lobby.
Okay. So that's something that you'll be working out as it's implemented, then?
Yes.
Any other questions of staff at this time? All right. Thank you. Are there any requests to speak on this item? No requests to speak? I will close public comment and bring it back to council for more discussion or consideration of a motion.
Mayor?
Mr. Duffy?
If I might just add, uh, pertaining to your earlier question, uh, our new, uh, IT consultants have given us two terabytes of memory, so we should be well-covered for any, um... We don't have to use, uh, additional servers. We should be well-covered with memory.
All right. Thank you. Well, council, what would we like to do?
I will move that we authorize the expenditure of twenty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars for the purchase of Laser FISH Avant Electronic Content Management System from CPS Complete Paperless Solutions and authorize the city manager to execute in agreement.
Okay.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Reiners, second by Councilmember Hesse. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Councilmembers Hesse, Wilson, and Reiners vote yes. Mayor Protem votes yes, and Mayor votes yes.
Okay, thank you. Move to item ten, which is to amend the contractor agreement with West Coast Arborists, Inc., to include tree planting services. May we have a staff report?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. I'm here this evening, Alan French, Director of Public Works, to present this item, uh, to you, to amend the contract for our West Coast Arborists. They are presently our tree contractor, and this item supports the twenty thirty goal number two, to maintain public safety. We are in the second year of our five-year tree maintenance program right now. Uh, the first year, uh, which started, uh, twenty sixteen, late twenty sixteen, early twenty seventeen, uh, part of that program for year one was to remove all the dead and diseased trees within the road right-of-way. So West Coast went through, uh, after an assessment was done, determined which trees needed to be removed, uh, and which ones were just diseased, but they were still removed and to make sure the right-of-way was safe. As part of the original bid for the work, they also included other, other items that the, they can provide for, other services they could provide for the city. And part of that was removal. In August twenty seventeen, the coun- in council meetings, the city manager presented, uh, possible projects to use for, um, redevelopment bond proceeds that were becoming available. One of those projects was a tree planting project, which included replacing these trees that were removed in the previous year. The tree rep planting program that we're, we're doing now, uh, asked for fifteen thousand dollars to get a majority of the trees that were removed from the previous year, um, to expedite this effort. Staff is recommending, uh, approval of amendment to the contract with WCA for additional scope to add planting for the trees at a cost of the fifteen thousand. This concludes my, uh, report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Director French. Does council have any questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Hesse.
Uh, Mr. French, I'm sorry, listen, my voice, um... How many trees are we gonna get for fifteen thousand dollars?
It's, uh, sixty-one of the trees, uh, and they're varying from, um, fifteen gallon to twenty-four inch box.
Is there a guarantee on these trees once they plant it?
Um, no, sir. We, we would assume the maintenance as soon as they're planted. Um, I'm pretty sure, um, it's our responsibility to water them, uh, for the, um, for the first year until they get established.
Um, I, I realize that, but, you know, like, if you go to Home Depot and you buy a tree, you got a guarantee for a year on that tree. If it dies, you can take it back. We don't have any guarantee like that with the...
Um, I'm, I'm pretty sure that, uh... Just checking with the contractor.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, uh, members of the council. My name is Martin Cortez with West Coast Starburst. I'm the manager. Uh, part of this quote was, did not include any warranty of the trees. Um, another quote was provided for, uh, maintenance, for watering, and, um, one-year maintenance of these trees. But for this particular quote, um, it did not include any warranty.
Uh, what type of trees are getting implanted? I mean, just a variety of them, and what's our species?
And, uh, what, what it is, is we have the record of the ones that were removed, and I'm, I'm confident that that is the trees that we were wanting to replace, the same type.
So we're not gonna have the same type of issues later on if we put the same type of tree in there, are we?
Uh, if, if the trees, uh, were, you know, dead, I'm sorry, due to lack of watering or, uh, environmental issue, um, that would cause the same effect regardless of the tree.
We, we could also provide a recommendation based on parkway size. Um, so if you have a large shaman lash on a small parkway size, we will recommend a smaller, a mo- smaller species for that, uh, type of parkway. So we, we could, um, provide recommendations on, um, drought tolerant trees or any smaller species size, uh, sizes for, for these particular, um, parkways.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Wilson?
Uh, Public Works guy. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh...
[laughing]
Aren't these trees gonna be planted in, in relation to our, uh, established ordinance, the how to plant, the, how to do the planting and so on? Because my understanding is for the last twenty-five years, how you plant a tree and how you treat it from the time it's being planted is entirely different than it used to be when these trees probably were originally planted.
Um, yes, sir, the, the methodology has changed. I'm, um, confident that the ordinance requires a certain type of tree in the parkway, uh, and we could definitely visit that and make sure these, that we were removed, are in compliance with that.
Okay.
As the contractor said, we, we will go through before we decide exactly which species will go in which location.
The other thing I want to know is, who's gonna pick the trees at the nursery? Because it's not gonna be the, the outfit that puts them in or supplies them. We have to have somebody that has a knowledge base to be able to pick the trees for their shape and what they are in relation to the body. and what they are in relation to the box and the can and so on, because, you know, otherwise, you've got the rooster and the hen house.
Okay.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So, let's just step back just for a second and kind of revisit where we, where we've come from. So, initially, when the council did an assessment, we hired an arborist to review all of our trees throughout the city. The next thing we did was, when we hired the certified arborist at W, West Coast Arborist.
WCA.
WCA. So, they are certified arborists that will be planting the trees on a second year of a five-year contract that we have with them. And so, one of the things that we had to look at when we looked at all the trees was that, you know, we have a history in town of trees that should not have been planted in certain locations that lead to concrete pop-ups and initially, in addition to that, some potential losses. So, one of the things that we have to do is that through our GPS scoping of every tree in the city, we have identified the proper trees to be planted at each location. We, it is not a list that was developed by West Coast Arborists. It was a list developed by our different consultant, and they made recommendations for planting of the trees based on the location and the proximity to the parkway. So, we will be following that mechanism as we implement this program. I, we have that, we do have the arborist on contract with us. We can certainly have him validate the location of the type of trees that are going to be placed. So, those are all things that we certainly can do.
Councilmember Wilson?
I'm sorry, city manager. I agree with that. There's just one more step that we missed there, and that is, someone who is qualified needs to be able to choose the trees at the nursery. Because, you know, it's one of those kind of circumstances where if you don't choose the right tree, and especially at this point, residential construction kind of goes in and out, and the availability of plant material goes in and out as well. If you can choose some really good stock to begin with, then the chance of survival whole lot better.
Sure. And Mayor?
I think that addresses Councilmember Hesse's concern as well. Wouldn't you agree with Councilmember Hesse?
And so, we have that separate arborist on contract, and we can certainly have him be a part of any selection of the trees that we select.
Any other questions at this time for staff? Councilmember Reinhardt?
So, just to clarify, this isn't new money. This is the $15,000 we had already identified in our priority list of our bond proceeds.
Yes.
So, the whole reason for the amendment is to add that so we can get these planted.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, I will open it to public comment. Do we have any requests to speak? All right. I see Mr. McConnell coming forward.
Sheriff McConnell, 21758 Walnut Avenue, which is right next door to West Coast Arborist. And as some of you know, I have several properties in town, and I do a lot of the work myself. And whenever I am on a property or something, I have a question about a tree, I snap off a twig and run over to my neighbors next door and show them the twig with leaves and stuff. And it's either Martine, Manny, or Leo, they are very knowledgeable of everything I walk in with, and they give me advice of whatever I might, whatever I was planning on doing. So, I just wanted to give you that, my experience with them. There seem to be very knowledge, everyone in the office, as to, about trees, since it is their business. But I literally just walk in with a little twig, and they know exactly what it is, and they give me advice on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? All right. Seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for their further discussion or consideration of a motion.
I move to amend a contractor agreement with West Coast Arborist, Inc., to include tree planting services and adopt a resolution approving an expenditure of bond proceeds and authorize the city manager to execute the contract amendment.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Reinhardt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And second by Councilmember Hesse. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously by councilmembers Reinhardt, Hesse, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
Thank you. Move to item 11, which is ratification of San Bernardino County Fire District Board's adoption of the 2016 California Fire Code with local amendments. Staff report, please, by Director Sandra Molina.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, thank you. This item to ratify the San Bernardino County Fire Code supports goal number two, to maintain public safety of the city's 2030 vision plan. Before I proceed in the presentation, I just wanted to let the council know that Mr. Joe Zaccaro, the Fire Prevention Supervisor with San Bernardino County Fire, is present in the audience. So, in July of last year, the state fire marshal adopted the California Fire Code. Local fire jurisdictions are required to enforce the state fire code, but are able to make amendments to that code based upon local conditions. City of Grand Terrace is served by San Bernardino County Fire Protection District, and on February 14th, the county board of supervisors, acting as the board of directors for the San Bernardino County Fire Protection District, adopted the 2016 county fire code with local amendments. So, the city council now, the action being requested is to ratify that ordinance by resolution to, that adopted the fire code. With the ratification, the existing municipal code, chapter 15.18, that's currently in our municipal code, is no longer necessary, and staff included an ordinance in the staff report repealing and replacing chapter 15.18 with only a reference to the adopted resolution that the council is considering this evening. There's no financial impact as a result of the recommended actions, and staff would recommend that the city council adopt a resolution ratifying the county fire code and also introduce an ordinance to amend chapter 15.18 of our municipal code. I'm available to respond to any questions, and also Fire Prevention Supervisor Joe Zaccaro is also present. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Molina. I believe Councilmember Wilson has some questions.
This is correct. You know, we have been, we have managed, as an individual city, which I believe there's a purpose behind that, not to adopt other ordinances in place of ours. And there are a few items here that I have concern about. The county code has a lot of information in here in relation to wildfire, but past experience tells me that any area that is, let's just say vacant and has some grass on it, becomes a wildfire risk. And I don't think that really applies to us. In fact, actually, the way they, the way the fire code has been administered in the past is, is that if you are in Victorville and you're in a county area, and you're, in other words, a non-city area, they, the fire code is administered similar to the way open areas are here. And not only open areas that are not owned by a particular citizen, but also owned by a citizen, in other words, private property. There are some things in here, for example, in packet page 259, this would be fire code page 21, talks about wildfire risk areas and very high fire hazard. And believe me, I'm not against, you know, taking care of our city. What I am concerned about is, is the way that the, the information that is in the code for the county is then administered within our city. So, there's a reason why we have a process in the city of Grand Terrace, and when we step towards a wholesale, you know, elimination of our fire code for a, for a county fire code, I think we're making a wrong move. If anything, I think the city has some justifications for some of the items that we have. So, I have a couple of other sections, and I'll be glad to, you know, go through them, but my thought pattern is, is that, you know, for example, dimensions of fire access roads, since when are they 26 feet? Let's see. Amendments of the California Residential Code on page 45. You know, there are some items in here that could be misconstrued in the administration, especially when it says, for example, on packet page 304, unless otherwise permitted, the possession, storage, use, sale, and handling of any fireworks is prohibited within the county of San Bernardino and the district. Okay, that's not our case here. It's the city of Grand Terrace. So, I'm a little afraid of blending or, and/or moving towards a wholesale replacement of a code when some of the items really don't fit our situation. And that's why we, you know, the last bastion of freedom is the city, you know, code, you know, our local control, so to speak. We seem to have a tendency to do this. Every time the state jumps up and does, you know, something, then all of a sudden, we run for cover and afraid somebody's going to sue us, and then we adopt that code, and then we, you know, and then we, now, now we're starting to head towards county situations, and I have a real problem with it.
Director Molina?
Yes, Councilmember Wilson. I'll ask Fire Prevention Supervisor Zaccaro to answer the technical questions, but just generally broadly, I want to step back for a minute. So, the, the fire code, every three years, is updated and adopted by the state, and then the county does adopt the local ordinance. We are in the service area for the county, and all plant checks that are reviewed by, by county fire, they're looking at it in light of the county fire code. In 2013 was the last time we adopted the county, the fire code, which is currently in our municipal code, but that, that did come from county fire. So, this is something that we've, we've done on a regular basis, based upon changes to the, to the state fire code. Our city attorney could answer and speak about the ratification of the entire ordinance that is in state law as well. And then also, again, Supervisor Zaccaro can talk about the implementation if you like.
Okay. But hang on for a second before you leave the podium. That, that gives me greater concern, because if the fire, if the state fire code is adopted, and then the county fire code then is adopted in accordance with that, and then we, then we, you know, use that instead of our city fire code, good grief. What's the use? You know, it's a, it's a situation that I see happening more and more, and that is, you know, once the higher court makes a decision somewhere, all of a sudden, it dribbles back down to the local control. And a local control, we have a whole process that we go through so far as nuisance and so on. It is completely different than what's in the, in the county code. Basically, they cut to the chase and throw you, you know, throw you in front of a, some kind of a review board, and you don't have a whole lot of rights involved. That's good for their situation. It's not good for ours. I can't see any reason for us to wipe out our process, which is fairer to the citizens than, you know, with supplementing it with some other, you know, entities' process. And if that's the, the direction we're, we're heading just by default, then we obviously owe it to ourselves to compare conflicting code sections. Because you can't make a case in front of an appeal officer when one code says this and the other code says that. Doesn't make any sense. And I've been through it, so I know.
Okay. Councilmember Wilson, I'll go ahead and let Supervisor Zaccaro respond.
Good evening. As far as the first statements about the wildfire risk area, those are all based on the maps that we get from the state. The state identifies the high, the fire hazard severity zones. So, we use those maps and those models from the state, and we have to enforce the state requirements, the fire code, on those areas, which we have included in Grand Terrace. There are some high fire hazard severities.
Absolutely, and I agree with you. Is it captain or?
The rank is captain.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Captain. I agree with you, but actually, we have a dichotomy of where our limits are for a high-risk area as it is. We actually take that same map, and we stick it in our general plan. But when it comes to the administration of the fireworks zone, it's a different map than the one that's in the general plan. I don't get it. But, you know, still, it should be the city's code. In other words, you guys would be administering the city's code. I, I understand that we use you, your folks, as the service, but then is it our obligation to wipe out our own jurisdictional information and have the county's jurisdictional information instead? I don't think so. It's not what we, that's not what we intended when the city was formed. Or else we'd be a county.
And that's understandable. That's why the state law requires the ratification in the areas that we service by the established cities. So, we have the same thing in the city of Victorville and Atlanta, all the rest of the cities that we provide service to. So, you do have the opportunity to create your own fire code. Use the state fire code as it is, and the, the code allows us to make the changes to the state fire code, as long as we're more restrictive and not less restrictive. So, we have, by, by, through our, our procedures, we've gone through the fire code, and we've made the changes that are appropriate for our operation. And answered, in response to the 26-foot fire lane, that's just based on turning radius, the size of the equipment, two-way traffic, et cetera. So, there's stuff that we look at, and we make these changes without overdoing it, because we don't want to make any more changes than what we, what we need.
Yeah, more than anything that you can support legally, actually, is the long run.
Correct.
And, you know, your more restrictive changes are justified, but they're subject to court trial if they, you know, they don't make any sense.
Correct.
And I understand. I have a copy of your fire code. It's, it was a uniform fire code, actually, and the California fire code. So, I understand what you're talking about. It's just that I'm concerned about us just wholesale adopting a county fire code in place of our city fire code for the same reason you just outlined. We look at it and see what our needs are.
Yes, and we have, we do take into consideration the other cities' requirements when we're doing our plant checks. When you have restrictions that are more, or if you have requirements more restrictive than ours, we enforce those. My, my plant checker has the building department standards, so we know exactly what you're looking for in your development. And then, again, we have our requirements for the different, for the different requirement, the different code sections. As far as, like you mentioned about the fireworks, we do not allow the fireworks in the county area. However, as a, as an incorporated city, you are allowed to make those allowances, and in this case, you guys allow safe and sane fireworks, so we recognize that. So, we do not say, no, we can't use them. We come in and enforce your, your allowances, your requirements on the safe and sane fireworks. And this is, this has happened over the years before I've been here, and so, it, it's just one of those things that when we adopt the new fire code every three years, it has to go before each of the incorporated cities for the ratification.
Thank you for your information, Captain.
You're welcome. All right. Mr. City Attorney? If we are adopting this, does it wipe out any of the differences that we have in our current fire code?
Actually, our current fire code, as Ms. Molina indicated, is actually the fire code, the previous fire code of our fire district. It was just adopted as an ordinance of the city, which isn't required. All we have to do is ratify the fire code that the district does. So, what's in there that we're calling our city code is actually the county code.
All right. But for example, unless otherwise permitted, the possession, storage, use, sale, and handling of any fireworks is prohibited within the county of San Bernardino and, and district. And clearly, we do allow that. Adopting this doesn't wipe out our allowing of that.
If, ratifying this doesn't, it, it will take the place of our current fire code, but if we have provisions, other provisions in our code, it won't wipe those out, meaning other than the fire code.
Okay.
And the state law, as he's mentioning, has changed, and we're required by law to adopt the state law. What the district-
At a minimum.
Yeah, at a minimum. And, and the district has to show to the state, and they have to file it with the state, any changes they want. They have to show to the state that there's something different about this area that requires those changes, and they have to make those justifications. And I read their code, and they did do that.
Okay. Any further questions of staff at this time? All right. Seeing none, I'll open it to public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this item? Thank you, Captain.
You're welcome.
Before I get started, do we have this on the screen by any chance? Any portion of this?
I, do we have, do we have a copy of this?
Packet page 287 is what I want to refer to.
287.
For the, the public here, if that's possible.
We don't have a presentation? All right. So, packet page 80, 287, Mr. McConnell.
Okay, if I recall correctly. I read that, and it looks like a violation of the Fourth Amendment, illegal search- I read that, and it looks like a violation of the Fourth Amendment, illegal search and seizure that the fire department can just, if they think there's a violation on your premises, they can just walk in.
Mr. City Attorney?
That's a violation of the Fourth Amendment.
I, I don't know which provision he's talking, but I'm trying to review.
Okay.
Forty, yes.
Jeffrey McConnell for the record, 21758 Walnut Avenue. I just want to give you some time to read that.
The Fourth Amendment protections, um, apply unless there is probable cause to go in, and they use the term reasonable, but when you read it, that's what they're talking about. If you have probable cause to believe there's violations going on and so on, you can go in, and that is not a violation of the Fourth Amendment.
All right. Did you have further comments, Mr. McConnell?
Yeah, I, I read this, too, and I realize, I, I saw a lot of, a lot of minute detail where the county is requiring permits for a large scale, I mean, a large amount of minor things, more regulation, including the size of, once again, your, your, your mulch pile that they wanted, if it's less than 200 cubic, or more than 200 cubic feet, I think they had a permit for it. They also were regulating the size, if you have horses, they were regulating the size of your horse, horse, horse manure pile, which I thought was a little strange. Um, I, I just think it's overregulation myself, and I'm trying to create, you know, one acre part, um, future green zone down there for future one-acre parcels, and they, of course, will have larger mulch piles in the residential. And if they have horses, I'm sure they're going to have a mulch pile that's going to have a lot of horse ducky in it. So I just, like Mr. Wilson was saying, wholesale adoption of this, it concerns me, um, in many areas, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? All right, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council, and I will ask Captain if you would discuss the idea of the size of mulch piles.
The fire code requires permits for certain types of operations and activities, including the storage of the mulch. We're looking at the commercial occupancies, not the private residence. We're not going to go over and tell the, the private residents that they can't have their, their mulch pile or regulate it. Uh, we wouldn't expect it to be that, uh, to, to exceed a certain size, anyway. But there are provisions in the code for the permits. Also, this section that-
And why is there a concern about the size?
Because of the amount of heat that can self-generate, which would then, uh, increase the chance of a fire. As, as the mulch breaks down, it, it self-generates the heat, and then that organic material will ignite. And then we have, we have a large enough pile, then we have a bigger fire, which is going to spread. That's why there's, excuse me, also limitations on spacing between the piles, because we want to provide some separation. So if there's a fire in one section, it's not going to jump to another, or it takes longer, giving us time to fight the fire.
Okay.
But, um, as far as the other section about, or what the gentleman said about the Fourth Amendment, that is concerning occupancies that have permits. When we issue a permit, when, when an occupancy is required to have a permit, we inspect it, we issue the permit, and one of the conditions is that they, they have to be in compliance. And if there's a situation, we need to go in and inspect, we have the authority to go and inspect by virtue of that permit.
Okay. Thank you. All right, um, so I'm back with council for consideration of a motion and further discussion. Councilmember Reinars?
I guess my question is, why do we have to repeal? Can't we ratify and not repeal? It says it's no longer necessary, but why do we have to repeal it?
Um, there would, well, if you don't do it, I, and you ratify this code, I imagine this code would be the one. The reason why we're repealing it is because it's based on a previous California law, and it's no longer valid. And so we're just repealing it to clean up the code so there's no conflict between our code and the district that serves our city.
Couldn't we amend ours to put it more in line?
Um, well, we could adopt this ordinance into our code, but it, it won't do the job of giving the, our fire district the authority to enforce the law, because they are, they are actually a fire district, a governmental entity into themselves that is in charge of fire for this city and the county and, and other cities.
So what's, what's our downside if we don't ratify this?
If you don't ratify?
What's the potential fallout?
Well, first off, our code is, is invalid because it's based on the previous California law, and if we don't ratify this, we don't have a fire code for our city.
Well, that clears-
That would be the downside.
That clears that up. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Hussey? No? Mayor Protem? No?
Just one other, just one other item while we're on it. Uh, one and two families, this is on packet page 283. I'm, I'm more concerned about misconstruing the ordinances versus, you know, making sure we don't burn the place down. One and two-family dwellings automatic fire system and automatic residential fire sprinkler system shall be installed in one and two-family dwellings, including new or used manufactured homes, and in multi-unit manufactured housing with two dwelling units manufactured after January 1, 2011, where a fire sprinkler system would normally be required in any residential unit that could be built on the same site. Now, when it comes to the exceptions, this is where you always look to see, okay, well then, but what about me?
Mm-hmm.
An automatic residential fire sprinkler system should not be required for additions or alterations. That doesn't say new buildings. And then it says, number two, used manufactured home moved into the jurisdiction do not already have an automatic fire sprinkler system, shall not be required to do it. And section, and this is item number two under that same deal, section R313 2.1 of the California Residential Code is adopted in the San Bernardino Fire Protection District Residential Code and amended to read, and then it goes on and talks about that. And it talks about NFPA systems, which are basically an amended system rather than your standard steel and, you know, pipeline-type commercial system. NFPA 13s are actually set up in the 13D system are set up to be able to protect residential circumstances and lighter uses, so that they're a little bit more affordable, but they still provide a, a situation. Now, if I was a person that was going to either buy or build a house in this area, I would wonder, okay, does this mean I have to put in a fire sprinkler system before I start? Well, there's a state code that says up to a certain square footage, or after a certain square footage, you have to do it. But then this is, this doesn't clarify that. So this is why I'm concerned about the one language, you know, kind of controverting another, and that's where you get in trouble if you can't defend one against the other.
Okay, I have to revise that, sir. This R13 section, this is our, um, adoption and changes to the residential code, the California residential code. The CRC was adopted by the state, and it requires that any new dwelling built, and this started in January 1 of 2011, any new dwelling, one and two-family dwelling, is required to have sprinklers. So there's no, uh, square footage. The square footage comes in on our commercial buildings, and we require sprinklers at 5,000 square feet, whereas the state code requires sprinklers at, uh, 12,000 square feet in, in generality. The reason we're more restrictive is because we have a bigger area, we have longer response times in some of the areas, so we just make it straight across the board at 5,000 square feet. And the majority of the cities in Southern California have all done the same. We follow their suit, is that 5,000 square feet. This section here for R313.2 and 313.2.1 basically says, "An automatic sprinkler system shall be installed in one and two-family dwellings, including new or used mobile homes or manufactured homes." The exception says that if it's an addition or an alteration to an existing building that does not have sprinklers, based on this state law, we cannot come in and say, because you're doing this addition, we want you to put sprinklers in the entire building. So that, they wouldn't have to do that. And then the second one says, "Used manufactured homes that were built before the requirement," which is January 1, 2011. If someone moved it into our county, it would not, we would not be able to require sprinklers in that existing structure.
No, I agree with you. In fact, I think that's what I just described. The only thing that concerns me is, is that later in on your, on your code, it actually talks about a separate water supply. So depending on what the demand is, you actually have to put in a separate manifold or a new water supply to be able to provide water on a consistent basis. In other words, you can't turn it off. That kind of circumstance, and that's, and that is good, but it's kind of hidden back there in the code that, you know, in our city code, it probably would have, you know, been sparkling out there so that you'd know.
Yes, we do not require the separate water supply. The, the water supply is all designated by the water purveyors, and there are water purveyors that require a separate meter. We are totally against that. We do not like that. We want them just to be onto the one meter, supplied, supplied by the domestic system, and, and it supplies everything in the building. Uh, this other section where it says, and R313.3 or NFPA 13D, the difference there is that the California residential code does specify the requirements for the sprinkler system as well as NFPA 13D. There are some differences in the way you, how you freeze protect with antifreeze or without, and then different areas that get protected. It's up to the contractor to decide if they're going to build a 313 or NFPA 13D, and we accept either one.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, um, I was thinking more about Councilmember Reinars's question about what happened. Like the building code, the fire code and residential code are mandated by the state, and if, if we don't adopt them, they are enforced on us. So what we would actually have, the one on our books we don't use, we would use the California law, but without any of the local revisions that the district has done. We would just have the straight California law.
Mayor Protem?
I, can you clarify that since we are not a charter city, we're a general law city, so the state makes laws for us? So we, we don't sit here and go, we have local control, and we're going to ignore the state. We can't do that.
Uh, yeah, that would be correct, but when it comes to these codes, even the charter cities have to go with them.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All right, shall we ratify this, or shall we let, leave it go and adopt the state by, by not acting?
I move that we adopt a resolution of the City Council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, ratifying the San Bernardino County Fire Protection District Board's adoption of the 2016 California Fire Code with local amendments for enforcement within the city of Grand Terrace. And to read by title only, waive further reading, and introduce an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, repealing and replacing chapter 15.18 California Fire Code in its entirety.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Reinars. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Reinars, Hussey, and Wilson voting yes. Mayor Protem Robles voting yes. Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 12, which is professional services agreement with TMB Planning for Environmental Services.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This item is a proposed contract to enter into agreement with TMB Planning for Environmental Services as indicated by the mayor. Mr. Sean Neville with TMB Planning is present in the audience. This item does promote the city's 2030 Vision Plan. Just to give the council a little bit of background, in December 2016, the city entered into a disposition and development agreement with Lewis Land Developers. The DDA proposed to sell 50 acres owned by the city to Lewis for future development. And, uh, by the way, the 50 acres have since been purchased by Lewis and title has been transferred to them. The DDA included a requirement that Lewis would bear the cost of preparing a specific plan and an environmental impact report for approximately 80 acres identified as mixed use in the city's general plan. This is the area generally west of the I-215 freeway. And although the development applications have yet not, have not yet been submitted by Lewis, Lewis has and continues to conduct its due diligence in master planning the site. Lewis asked the city to have, um, to be allowed to hire their own consultant to prepare the EIR, and the city, after consideration and discussion, agreed with the, agreed to allow them to prepare their own EIR, but with the understanding that Lewis would cover the cost for a third-party CEQA reviewer retained by the city. The city did let out an RFP to 10 consulting firms, and we received three responses. TMB Planning, Inc. received the highest ratings and demonstrates understanding of the project and requires services. The firm has experience and the capacity to perform the work that was identified in the RFP. The cost of the work is approximately, is $42,000. That's the cost that was included in the proposal, and again, that will be paid by Lewis. Therefore, staff requests that the council approve the attached contract with TMB. Um, and, um, that would conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Malina. Does, uh, council have any questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll open it up for public comment. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I will move to approve a contract with TMB Planning, Inc. in the amount of $42,000 and authorize the city manager to execute the contract and to make any amendments necessary to complete the project.
All right, motion by Councilmember Reinars. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Reinars, Hussey, Wilson voting yes. Mayor Protem Robles voting yes. Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item 13, which is award of professional services contract for preliminary design of Commerce Way. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members, Allen French, Public Works Director. Uh, this item before you is to award a sole-source contract with Webb and Associates for the preliminary, just the preliminary design and study of Commerce Way. This item supports, uh, the 2030 goal number two of maintaining public safety and investing in critical improvements, and goal number four, to develop successful partnerships. Staff is recommending council take this action because historically, the city has identified Commerce Way expansion as early as pre-2000s. Back in the 90s, they were looking at how to connect Commerce to Main and Taylor, and this was an old, uh, study that was done, um, prior to, uh, 2000. Then, uh, in 2010, this is the general plan of circulation that's been adopted, and it too shows Commerce from its existing terminus, which is about 600 feet west of Michigan, down to, from the end of, uh, existing Commerce is here, 600 feet east, west of Michigan, It swings around to Taylor and Main. So that's, what's in the general plan now. And now, uh, as, uh, the previous item, uh, the planning director mentioned, uh, the city has approved the sale of 50 acres to the Lewis Group, um, and their potential property is in that area, uh, kind of at the end of Van Buren and where Commerce would be. Because of that action, um, that has kind of stimulated, um, the need for a preliminary design for Commerce alignment. This is the area, and it's more of a straightforward alignment concept that's been around just Staff would, uh, like to conduct preliminary design at this time to, um- Staff would like to conduct preliminary design at this time to aid in the development of the area since Webb and Associates is under contract with the Lewis Group at this time and they are also designing the southern portion of Commerce, which is part of the Lewis project as well. So we believe that it would be most efficient for them to do the northern portion as well and completing the project. The extension of Commerce will be 40% funded by development impact fees and 60% funded by Measure I. The total estimate of the expansion is 3.5 million. Tonight's request is for $12,880 for the funding of the preliminary design and studies for the northern portion of Commerce and that just come out of the development impact We have a representative from Webb and Associates that can answer any questions and I'm here to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Director French. Are there any questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing no questions, I will open it up to public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak during this time? All right, seeing no takers, we'll bring it back to council for any further discussion or consideration of a motion.
I move adoption of the recommendation, approval for professional services agreement should be prepared and/or reviewed by the city attorney's office between the City of Grand Terrace and Webb Associates for preparation of the preliminary 35% plans and related documents and studies of Commerce Way and to authorize the city manager to execute the aforementioned agreement with Webb Associates in the amount of $12,880 for the preliminary design of Commerce Way and three, adopt a resolution approving the expenditure of development impact fees proceeds.
Motion by Mayor Protem, is there a second?
A second.
And second by Councilmember Reinars, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Reinars, Hussey and Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to item 14, which is Grand Terrace Draft Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Director Molina up again. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you, members of the council. Just, just briefly, this is the hazard mitigation plan that is before the city council. We've been taking steps to update our emergency management services and in March, the council may recall, the council adopted our emergency operations plan. This is our local hazard mitigation plan, which is updated every five years. We utilize matching funds from an emergency management performance grant to hire Ethan Mobley from Dynamic Planning Services. He is present this evening and he will provide the council with an overview of the hazard mitigation plan. At the conclusion of his presentation, staff is requesting that the council receive the final draft and direct, and direct staff to submit it to the state for review. After that process is completed, it will come back to the council for adoption. Thank you, and this is Mr. Mobley.
Thank you, Sandra. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Mayor Protem and other council members present today in the round table in front of me. Thank you for listening to this presentation.
Will you say your last name for me?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ethan Mobley. I'm the owner of Dynamic Planning and Science. We're a micro, small business certified in California.
Thank you.
Thank you for hiring us and our services. This took about a year long, it was a year-long effort and a lot of the members in the council chambers today were present during our process. I have a small PowerPoint presentation. I hope that you can stay awake for it. I know it's probably past some people's bedtimes, but I'm going to wait for the PowerPoint presentation. We are a, a small business that specializes in hazard mitigation planning across the western United States. We did the hazard mitigation plan for San Bernardino County and a lot of the participating jurisdictions within that county. So we, we know mitigation planning through its core and I really believe that the City of Grand Terrace did an excellent job of participating throughout this process. Picture-perfect public participation as well as participation from the planning committee. Who is present? I think I see some members back here, some members around the table. It was a fun process. I don't, I wouldn't say it was a blockbuster process, but it's a required process for FEMA to approve the plans and I'm going to go through a little bit of the, of the plan results. I'm going to present to you the mitigation planning, what it is, some risk assessment outcomes, a mitigation strategy and the unified grant program that this entails. And if, please, if you have any questions, please interrupt me and ask them if you so desire. We had a large list of planning committee members throughout this process. Again, it took a year long to put together and we had really good participation and I really appreciate and thank the participants of this planning process. In 2000, Public Law 106390 provides a legal basis for FEMA to require state, local and tribal governments to put together a mitigation plan as a requirement for grant assistance under the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. As a result of this process, you, you must update the plan every five years to remain eligible for grant funding, the HMGP grant funding. And I'll go over a little bit of that grant funding opportunities and requirements later on in the slide deck here. The City of Grand Terrace's first plan was in 2005. So as you can see that we, we missed a grant funding opportunity and window and as a result of that, we are here today to update the plan to remain eligible in 2017. This, this grant, this, this funding for, for my services was provided under EMPG grant funding, so a lot of free money, different colors of money coming down to help with this effort. As you can see on the right, the, the state of California has a hazard mitigation plan. The county has a hazard mitigation plan, which we can, we can update it in 2017, which was recently approved by FEMA. So we got that through the process and now we have the City of Grand Terrace's plan. So basically, it's an umbrella approach from the state to the county, to the, to the city. What is, what is unique about this plan is now we do not have to apply to the county to, for hazard mitigation grant assistance. We can apply directly to the state now so we can augment the requirements that the county may rack and stack hazard mitigation grant funding opportunities at the county. Now we don't have to do that. We can go directly to the state to compete. So like I said, we are a, a planning firm that specializes in grant, in hazard mitigation planning and we've been working a lot with your sister cities and the county. So we know the conditions that arise as a result of either wildfire, flooding and other hazards like earthquake in the area and we, we model these types of events and we, we conduct risk assessments for cities like yours. We're working for the City of San Bernardino, San Bernardino County Unified School District. We've reviewed many of these sister cities' plans here to make sure that they, when they do update their plans, they're, they're compliant with FEMA obligations. So why have a mitigation plan? Well, it reduces the, your exposure and increases your protection for your residents from natural hazards, events such as earthquake, wildfires and flooding. You become more self-sufficient and self-reliant through education and resources for your residents. We did some of that outreach for your residents as a result of this program and project and we continue, we will continue to do that over the next five years as a requirement for FEMA to reapprove the plan. The plan contains specific information to support FEMA and CalOES grant opportunities. So as you read through the plan, you're going to see some risk assessment data that says this amount of people are at risk, this amount of value is at risk. This helps support your applications for the grant, for the grant program. And also, like I said before, it will apply, it gives the, the city the ability to apply directly to CalOES for funding. That's really, really important and, and ensures safe development in future years. So we align the, the priorities and goals and objectives with the general plan as well. As Councilmember Wilson mentioned, hey, we use your, your threat layer in your general plan. We, we use the same threat layers to develop our risk assessment data and our exposure data. So we're, we're aligned with those mechanisms that you have as a city. Just a little bit about the grant program. There's pre-disaster and post-disaster grant assistance and nearly $1 billion was let out in 2016 for those types of grant applications or those grant awards. So 4% was awarded to pre-disaster mitigation dollars, very competitive. There's also flood mitigation assistance that's for, mostly for repetitive loss properties as, in the, in National Flood Insurance Program. We don't have a lot of those in the city, very minimal FEMA flood zones in the city. But right here, the 82% is, is post-disaster mitigation. So how can we build better, stronger after a presidentially declared disaster? So that's most of the funding that comes down. So the victims of Hurricane Harvey and other hurricanes or strong superstorms like Sandy, this is where this, a lot of the funding goes to. So there was 1,586 hazard mitigation grants awarded in 2016 and you can see in FEMA Region 9 here, there's 129 grants let, or approved and appropriated in FEMA Region 9. Now that includes wildfire, fuel reduction grants, that includes flood, flood assistance and flood, home elevations or structural projects. So there's all different types of grants that we can, we can apply for and they're in the plan now. So we, we went through this process to identify the risks in the plan and develop mitigation actions to align ourselves with the grant assistance that's coming down from this program. This is really important, too. Every, every dollar spent on mitigation saves $4 in the future. So that's, that's a really important piece that FEMA likes to drive home. It saves your residents money if we, we start building better, building smarter for every dollar we save, $4 if the wildfire were to occur on Blue Mountain or if there is a significant flood in your, in your flooded areas or say an earthquake. And so right now, we're, we're pretty exposed to earthquake in this area. Not a lot of folks have earthquake insurance and, and earthquake insurance is not provided in these zip codes and many of the zip codes across Grand Terrace and across San Bernardino County. We follow a planning process. This is our, our planning process as we, we developed it from FEMA guidance. This is Dynamic Planning and Sciences planning process that we developed over time. I think, we think it really works and it's really clear. It's a six-phase process and we do a lot of the heavy lifting in phase five and six as we develop the plan. But the, the City of Grand Terrace's staff really helped with phase five and six and I really appreciate your help. But I'm going to go through some of the, the phases, some of the details as regards to risk, the risk assessment and the mitigation strategy today, tonight. And the mitigation strategy that you see in the document, in, in section five of the document is, is really a problem-solving methodology. We estimate the impacts, which is section four, the risk assessment. So we're estimating the impacts of each hazard throughout, in the city. We describe the problem. What are the problem statements? What are, and this is where a lot of documents fall down in detail. We meet all the requirements, but we never talk about the problem after the risk assessment. So we've done that in 2017. We assess the resources, your capabilities. How can we develop a better mitigation plan based upon the exact capabilities of the city? And that's in section 5.4, if you're interested in late night reading. Develop goals and objectives. That's in, after we assess our resources and then we can determine what can be done with our mitigation actions. So there's a lot of detail in here, but I'm just going to go quickly through the slides. I had about 20 minutes. So this is, this is the bread and butter of a mitigation plan is the risk assessment. So what's that risk and then we estimate the impacts. So we start with the universe of hazards, I call it, and we look towards those documents that I showed earlier, the 2013 State Hazard Mitigation Plan. We look at the county plan, we look at the general plan and we say, hey, what's, what are the hazards in the area that could affect the city? Now, we don't want to list volcano, obviously, we have limited resources, so, and limited planning time to put these documents together. So we, we try to make sure that we streamline the document to meet the needs of, of the cities that we work in. So in, in the document, we include hazard profiles, we call them. So we profile the hazard. We, we tell the reader about the severity of the hazard, the location, the extent. Those are some requirements by FEMA as we profile this hazard. So we did that in this document for earthquake, landslides, wildfire, flood and climate change. And this is found in section four. So when we do this risk assessment and we profile the hazards, we also include what is called a vulnerability assessment. We look at exposure and vulnerability to the community, both in terms of population, value at risk. This is really important, too, that we, we look at your, your parcel, your assessors' data to make sure that we understand what's at risk if we don't do some mitigation in certain areas of the city. It also helps with the grant application process. Here's what is at risk if FEMA, you don't fund this as a city. So we want to do the bleeding heart to, to, as we, we develop the application process. So we, through this, we, we do a damage estimation as well. So there's, there's differences between exposure and, and damage estimation and we've done both in the document. So under earthquake and flood, you can see damage estimation based upon depth of flooding or the severity of the earthquake. We, we modeled a particular scenario. Have you guys heard of the Great Shakeout? So we modeled that earthquake and show the results in the document. So when we estimate the impacts, we look at the total population and then this is the value of your, your assessed value. It's not your market value of all parcels within the city, but it's your assessed value. And we're looking at close to a billion dollars worth of improvements across the city. This is the numbers that we look at before we start running the exposure or damage assessments. When we look at earthquake scenarios, we look at the probability of ruptures along certain fault lines and we look at scenarios that have been developed by USGS and they're called shake maps. And we chose a certain shake map and it's a 6.7, you'll see the, the scenario, but I believe it's a 6.7 for the, the Great Shakeout. And that, that event is likely to occur over the next, it has a 93% chance of occurring over the next 30 years. So we have a pretty good chance of, of this type of event occurring along the San Andreas Fault. As you can see, the, the probability by year or over a 30-year period for greater than 6.7 probability, you can see that this, or this fault line has a greater probability than the, the, the other fault lines in the area. So we modeled a, a realistic event for you. This is what the shake map looks like for this event. And as you can see, the darker colors means a, a stronger severity of shaking. Now what a seven means to you, as you would feel it in your home here in, in Grand Terrace is you would feel that specially designed structures, I'm sorry, damage is slight in specially designed structures, right? So we have slight damage in structures that have been designed to withstand this kind of earthquake. Heavy furnitures overturn, chimneys, monuments may topple, even in specially designed buildings, which is in the area of Grand Terrace. And you're going to, as a result of this type of, this scenario, buildings may, in this very strong shake zone, you may experience buildings shifting from foundations and collapse. So it's, it's a very violent scenario and this very could, well happen in the City of Grand Terrace and in this region. So I just want you to be aware that this could happen in the area. This is why we're putting this mitigation plan in place as your protection for your We modeled the loss estimation results for earthquake and we're seeing damage in the amount of about $500 million of damage to, to residential, government, educational, industrial, building types and uses. So this is a, we used a FEMA certified model. It's called HazIS MH, multi-hazard. We can model earthquakes, we can model flooding and, and high wind events and this is based upon historic damage from earthquakes across the country and we modeled this as a, as a result of. of a lot of research done by USGS and FEMA. So as you can see, out of the total building stock that we put into the system, it's $3.7 billion. We're seeing about $500 million worth of damage as a result of this earthquake in this area, according to your census blocks and census tracts. So as you can see, we can expect quite a significant amount of damage as a result of this kind of scenario. Now, I'm not saying this will happen. I'm not most of them, but it has a very likely chance of happening, this kind of event. A population at risk, everybody is at risk of violent shaking in this community as a result of this scenario. A lot of folks will experience violent, very limited folks would experience severe shaking. What I wanted to show you in this slide is, this is pretty important, too, is this is how we look at prioritization of hazards in the area. So we look at population in the flood zones, in the 100- and 500-year flood zones. A total of 11 people are in the flood zones. Not a very big deal, right, compared to the amount of folks that could experience violent shaking as a result of the earthquake scenario? So we take a look at racking and stacking the hazards, we call it, to make sure that we can prioritize them appropriately and prioritize the conversation in the document appropriately as well as we get into mitigation. The risk assessment summary, we put together parcel counts, value, exposure. But we always talk about population first. It's your most important asset. So as you move through the document, you look at population first, and then we start talking about parcels and value at risk. So as you can see, the wildfire and earthquake, we see that anomaly, right? Then after we're done with the risk assessment, we go into the mitigation strategy. So we're solving the problem. Basically, the mitigation strategy involves estimating the impacts, describing what the problem is, assessing it, the objectives and actions taken. And you can read throughout the documents available online if you're interested. We take the goals and objectives to solve the problem. I really like the goals and objectives of the California State Mitigation Plan, so we took those as the goal and objective. So we want to continuously improve the hazard and vulnerability assessments. This is not our last chance at it. We get to do this every five years. We evaluate and improve the ability to alert and warn residents. So what's coming up? How can we alert you guys better and more often? We look at that as an objective. We also want to support mitigation planning in all city operations, like you mentioned, general plan, emergency operations plans. We want to support the reduction of risk. And then last and most importantly, we want to increase the city's capability to provide mitigation opportunities for residents. So how can we provide better and more resources to residents wishing to do mitigation at the home? Like, how can I bolt down my framing to my foundation better? How can I strap my TVs down to reduce the risk of me losing my flat-screen TV and not watching football on Sundays?
There's a question for you.
There's one question. Can you clarify something for us, for the audience as well, and for those that are home? Pre-63 to post-63 building requirement.
63 to, what was that?
Pre-63 to post-63 building requirement, so far as seismic.
Oh, sure. So there's benchmark years as far as building construction is concerned. So I think you're alluding to the requirements as far as when, so, for instance, in the Northridge earthquake happened in 1994, there was tremendous building code improvements in 1996. So for wooden structures, they saw a big, as a result of the Northridge earthquake, there was a lot of damage to wooden structures. So they increased or made better improvements to the building code as a result of that earthquake. So in 1966, I believe there was another event. Can you allude to that event, or do you know about that event? What was that? I'm not sure what it was. But there is building code improvements in 1977, but I'm not aware of the 66. Can you, what was that?
For the record, it was what?
It was the Silmar quake, is that what it was?
Silmar. So I was born in 1977, so I'm sorry. I didn't do my research and homework prior to this. But in the document, we have the benchmark years listed out for the City of Grand Terrace, as well as the San Bernardino County, when they approved and adopted each unified building code as we moved through time. So we can understand when certain neighborhoods were built, what kind of exposure the neighborhoods have for these types of scenarios that we're modeling. Hope I answered the question correctly. Okay. So the mitigation strategy and development, we go into goals and objectives, and then we have 24 mitigation actions in the document. And then we have 12 implementation plans. So we get into further and further detail. And this is what sets us aside from a lot of the other consulting firms. We get more and more detail compared to some of these guys who put together templates and take off. We really like to work, I really appreciated working with the city, and I really appreciate putting together more detail. And I check in with my clients, making sure that they're implementing their projects and implementing the program. It's a big deal for us. So there's 12 implementation plans in the annex of the plan. We have 24 mitigation actions. They're all different, from landslide remediation to earthquake retrofitting, or, hey, let's provide more resources to residents over time. Just going to go a little bit about the FEMA mitigation programs. I think I have some time. Do you guys want to learn about the program itself, just for three minutes or so? So there's five unified HMA programs. That should be a close parentheses right there. I don't know. I fat-fingered it. But the ones specifically that are more geared towards the City of Grand Terrace are HMGP and PDM. The HMGP stands for Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Now, after Hurricane Harvey comes through here, not here, but in the United States, it opens up a pot of money. It's called HMGP. So that's post-disaster mitigation. And what that provides residents is the ability to rebuild, but rebuild better and smarter. But it also provides money for folks who didn't get damaged who want to rebuild better and smarter. So there's a pot of money that comes down, like I mentioned in the slides in the beginning. 82% of all of this money is coming from HMGP grant funding. The pre-disaster mitigation dollars is more competitive. It's before a disaster strikes. It's not necessarily tied to a presidential disaster declaration. So there's a lot of competition for this money. And so the HMGP funding, now that you'll have a plan, and after we make a, if you would like to submit it to CALOES, we would have an approved plan in about six months, and we would be eligible to receive HMGP as well as PDM after disaster declaration. The funds are allocated during the recovery period under HMGP, and it's intended for investment in long-term mitigation measures. So this is not your public assistance dollars to do debris removal. This is to build better and smarter. So after the recovery period is over. And in California, if we have a presidential disaster declaration, we get 20% of that to make those improvements. So in both states, it's 15, but the state of California has an enhanced mitigation plan, so they get 20%. So that's a big deal as well. Projects, this is important, too. This is really important for the folks as we move through this program, is that if there's a flood in California, like the 2016, 2017 storms, we can apply for earthquake retrofits. It doesn't matter what color of hazard it is. We can still apply for the different types of mitigation, as long as it's in our plan. The state manages this money as well. So we apply to the state. We don't have to go to the county anymore. So PDM is authorized under 203, the Robert T. Stafford Act. Again, there's a 75%, 25% share of non-federal dollars. That can be in-kind services under PDM. And you must be consistent with your adopted local mitigation plan. So you must be consistent with the items that we see in the plan, and you must meet cost-effective requirements, which is called a benefit-cost analysis. And it's made available annually based upon congressional appropriations. That's it.
Any questions at this time? I have a question. It's kind of an elementary question. It doesn't really get into the heart of the mitigation and all that. But on page 3-2, actually, 3-3, we talk about planning committees and stakeholder members. So there's a table that has the stakeholder list, and it isn't complete. So I'm wondering if there's going to be, there's going to be an opportunity to go through and fill in some of these missing pieces before it would be submitted anywhere?
Yes, there is. There's always a chance to edit on this plan as we go forward and we submit to CALOES. We can make small adjustments. And that stakeholder list is incomplete under what column? I think there's names down there, but is there roles missing?
Sometimes there aren't names.
Okay.
And sometimes there aren't. In fact, in most of them, there are no names. It's...
Just blanks?
Grand Terrace Elementary School.
Oh, yes. That'll be completed as we move forward. It was a draft plan, and we're waiting for other stakeholders to make comment on the plan.
Okay, so it has gone out to all the stakeholders for them to make their comments, and those will be added before it goes anywhere.
That's why it's blank, yeah.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, the reason why I brought up the section about 1963. The 1967 code was updated to include seismic stuff. Before that, there were no earthquake regulations in the state code, which is everything's patterned off of. And the reason why I brought that up is because many residences in the north side of Grand Terrace were built pre-1963. So it gives folks that are listening or watching now the opportunity to consider what level of protection they want to do in relation to earthquake insurance, or maybe some additional engineering, or whatever that they might want to do
Sure.
in the event of a fairly healthy shake.
Yeah, so there's a program called the Brace and Bolt Program. It's sponsored by the state. It's not available in the ZIP code, but we've been making progress to try to get this ZIP code involved in that program. It's based upon a risk and the amount of probable shaking in an area and the types of homes that are built in this area. So we're trying, we looked into the Brace and Bolt Program, and hopefully it will come to this community soon as a result of this planning effort.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Hussey?
Well, it's not a question. It's a statement. I want to thank Becky and Ed and everybody else who helped with this plan, you know? A lot of hours, really detailed, and, you know, we're going to, hazards is going to happen. I saw a lightning bolt hit Blue Mountain and started a fire, you know? So, you know, it was just a matter of time for the great shake, and I've been in a flash flood. It's not fun. I just want to thank you, the residents, and you guys coming out and taking out your time from your family to work on this plan. I really appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much
Thank you.
for your report on this very...
I'm jazzed up. I'm really excited about it. I eat this stuff up every day, so I'm really excited to present it to you. And it's the impetus of a program and working with you guys. I really thank you for your participation and the citizenry of Grand Terrace. It's been great. I have a hat, hopefully, at the end of this, and a license plate frame.
Is that what you were promised?
I got the license plate frame, but I was promised a hat today.
Well, we'll see how this vote turns out, then. Maybe that's the determination. Thank you for your report, Mr. Mobley.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Is there any member of the public that would like to speak at this time?
Do we have the maps on packet page 470 for the screen?
Mr. McConnell?
Do we have the maps on packet page 470?
Is it a map that you saw during the presentation?
No.
No.
But it's in the staff report.
Okay. Do we have any other items to show on the presentation, other than what was in the presentation? Okay, so which page?
Packet page 470.
470?
On and around. There's three maps there. For the record, Jeffrey McConnell, 21758 Walnut Avenue. When I first learned about the freeway project, being an old contractor and having heavy equipment, I was looking to see if they had any free dirt for projects along the terrace. And apparently, I finally hunted down the SPCA rep, and he says there's 150,000 cubic yards of free dirt that they're looking for a home for. And when I caught wind of this disaster mitigation, I contacted members of the committee, as well as I mentioned also to the city manager at the veterinarians' groundbreaking ceremony, that this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, for those who aren't aware of it, to be able to get a lot of free dirt. And I also spoke with the contractors, the dirt contractors that are doing the project, and they were most anxious to find a home for it within two blocks, instead of having to drive it a far distance at great expense. So I was pushing to try and mitigate some of the slumping that I've been watching over the years in my time here in Grand Terrace, specifically over my neighborhood. And it's been going on forever as one of the continuing hazards, as it was presented. And if there is a big shakedown, not just the rain, that constant slumping, but also the shakedown will cause a lot of damage to the terrace. And I thought that we could utilize this free dirt as part of the mitigation plan, if the timing is right. So on the page 470, 471, where it shows, it's incorrect, I believe it's incorrect, shows Vivienda and Burns, that doesn't need any, where the red arrows are, it doesn't need any mitigation there. It's just a part of an arroyo. The area is basically from Newport, which I can't point out, along the terrace there, all the way to Terrace Avenue. And in that area, there was two major losses four years ago where there was washouts, and it cost the city a lot of money because of lack of maintenance, et cetera. So I just wanted to point that out, that that's to be added to, included in the mitigation plan, the draft that you're preparing, because there's lots of ongoing damage there, not just for thousands of years, but just in my short time there. And if there is a big shakedown, it could cause Vivienda and portions of Grand Terrace Road, as well as Vivienda, to falling downhill. There's a 50-foot drop there, right there at Vivienda, above my property.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Do you have the information on the contacts that you made that you could give to staff so that they could follow up on those?
Yes, I have all their business cards.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak during this time? All right. So you know takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion to receive the final draft of the local hazard mitigation plan, and direct staff to submit the final draft to the state for review.
Mayor, the motion to receive the final draft of the local hazard mitigation plan and direct staff to submit the final staff review to the state, and also issue one baseball cap to the contractor.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Councilmember Hussey and a second by Councilmember Wilson. Please
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Ryan Arns, Hussey, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protemorbus voting yes, Mayor McEnbo voting yes.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Mobley, sounds like you're getting your cap. You'll have to come back and wear it, like when we go on a hike up Blue Mountain or something. That's right. All right. Mr. City Manager, do you have communications for us tonight?
So several weeks ago, there was an issue regarding the identification of yard sale signs. And so what we've done is we've developed a standardized yard sale sign that the city will have, and it will have a QR code that leads directly to our website that shows all the permitted yard sales in the city. It'll also have a sort of a whiteboard here that people can put down their arrows and their addresses. So we will assign five of these for every yard sale that we have, and we'll require a $25 to $50 deposit that when they return the signs, they will get their money back. But these signs can also be placed in the public right of way. And so this should resolve any issue that we have regarding... And so this should resolve our, you know, any issue that we have regarding conformity and, and just signs placed everywhere. But these signs cannot be posted on, on, on stop signs and telephone poles. These are, be put in the public right of way. They come with a stand also. But we're hoping that this will, one, allow the residents an opportunity to advertise their yard sales, but also keep some uniformity in the, in the process.
Okay, so the, the deposit that is put in is that instead of the, the fee that was previously charged?
So there is a sign permit that you can get, and that would be for $50. So instead of that, we, they would, they come in for a yard sale. If they pay their $5 for the yard sale, they can also put the deposit down and get five of these signs.
Okay.
That's it.
Oh, that's it? Very nice. Thank you very much. All right, well, we do have a closed session tonight. And so before we recess to close session, I do want to thank everybody for their attendance tonight and participation. And I also want to let you know, since you probably won't be here when we come back, we will be closing tonight in memory of, unfortunately, a number of, of Grand Terrace residents, beginning with Terrence Terry McGuire Jr., Gary L. Robinson, Rudy Gonzalez, right?
Rudy Gutierrez. And Richard Quincey.
Okay. And so it's unfortunate that we have to have so many, and, but it is nice that we have people that we can recognize. Obviously, we have a lot of community members that do very good for the community. So we will be closing in their honor tonight. And I will move to our recess, a closed session, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957B1, title city manager. This is the, hopefully, the final evaluation that will put us in compliance with our contract with our city manager. So at this time, we are in recess. Closed session, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section We'll reconvene to open session. The council met and closed session for one item, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957B1, title city manager. There are no reportable actions. We are going to adjourn tonight, as stated before, in honor of the four members of our community. Our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 26, 2017, at 6:00 PM. Agenda item requests must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding that meeting. We are adjourned.